Dan for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to the June 2nd County Commission Meeting. I remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender. And Robert is in the front row if you need a listening device for our meeting. We will start with routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the county commission minutes from April 26, 2015.
Some move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any changes? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $280,127.24. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second. Any comments on the bills? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. The first report is this surplus property appraisal board report for property RDID 14-086 and 14-088, Corson. Are we going to comment on that? No.
You can if you'd like.
Maybe just what it's about.
Commissioners, this report was done by the surplus property appraisal board and that a few weeks ago, and this is concerning the two vacant properties up in Corson that the county owns. The next step in the process, if you are comfortable with these values that were established by the surplus property board, we will schedule a consideration for you to determine a method of sale for these two properties, whether it's by public auction, sealed bid, Realtor, you know, et cetera. But this is just one step in the process to dispose of those properties.
Okay. Thank you, Ken. Item number five is personnel action. Item A is consider a motion to approve routine personnel action. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any questions for Carrie? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item B is recognize significant employee anniversaries for June 2015.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I have a fairly sizable list of anniversaries for you today. We have Donna Frank in the Treasurers Office and Joshua Vesely at Highway both celebrating five years of service this month. Reese Dieters and Jorge Vasuna at the Juvenile Detention Center both celebrating 10 years. Julie Hofer, the Public Advocate, Craig Butler in the Sheriff's Office, and Joseph Bozeman in the Sheriff's Office, all celebrating 10 years of service. We also have Wade Hanson at the jail and Janelle Ingalls at the Juvenile Detention Center celebrating 15 years of service, and Captain Paul Niedringhaus at the Sheriff's Office celebrating 25, so a lot of years of service there.
None of them here today are doing.
I don't believe so.
They're all working, so, alright. And item C is recognize volunteers in the county departments for May 2015.
The total count for May was 244, so a lot of volunteers helping out in 11 areas across the county, and our thanks goes out to them.
Yeah, our thanks do go out to those. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Item number six is applications for abatement. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources notice of general surface water discharge permits for metal finishing industrial users and general surface water discharge permits for domestic wastewater treatment plants that discharges to waters of the state with only the nine, fish and wildlife propagation, recreation, and stock waters, watering waters beneficial use or nine, fish and wildlife propagation, recreation, and stock watering waters and tan irrigation beneficial uses. Item B is under notices and requests Sioux Falls City Planning Commission notice of hearing to consider proposed creation of a tax increment tax district 2015-A and 2014-1. Item C is authorizing the county auditor to publish notice of bids for the WH Lyons Fairground facility exterior repairs. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, we had sustained some storm damage to some roofs and fascias out in various buildings at the WH Lyons Fairgrounds, and our insurance estimate to facilitate those repairs are higher than what the state bid limits would suggest on for real estate repairs. So as a result, we did have bid specifications prepared to complete this work by prospective architects, and we would hope that you would authorize this notice to bidders to facilitate those repairs. Bids if you approve this would be opened on June 24th, and we would hope to complete the repairs before October.
Are there any questions for Ken?
Ken, what's our deductible on?
There's various deductibles based on the buildings out there, so it's really kind of hard to say, and that for each one of these.
So are they applying a deductible to each building then?
Yes. Yes.
And the total was $50,000?
Correct.
I mean, if we have a $10,000 or $20,000 deductible, I guess it would be worth pursuing.
Oh, it's not that high on any of them. The max deductible that we have on, I think, any of the buildings is around $5,000. Yes.
Any other questions for Ken? Look for a motion to authorize publication?
Some move.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine is compromise of lien, DPO 51135, in the amount of $638.60. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, this is a fairly straightforward compromise request. The original lien account was established in the name of a husband and wife and who have since been divorced. At the time of the divorce, there appears to have been no lien balance occurred. I mean, it was at a zero balance at one time, and then the final charge was for a public defender service on behalf of the ex-husband that occurred clearly after the divorce. The applicant had purchased a home back in, I believe, 2007. She's in the process of trying to refinance that particular home, and this county aid lien popped up during that refinancing because her name is on this lien account as well, and that even though the lien occurred after the divorce and is clearly in the ex-husband's name. So what the applicant is requesting is that this lien be released specifically against the real estate that she owns so that she could proceed with the refinancing, and that her name be taken off of this lien account, and we would recommend approval of that action.
Are there any questions for Ken? Is the applicant present?
I don't believe she is.
Okay. So, commission action, Miss.
I'll make a motion to approve the application.
I'll second. The motion is, I'm assuming, to remove the lien from the house and the woman's name and put it all on the person who incurred these charges.
And remove her name from the lien, period, so that if something happens, it won't be.
Right. Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Next one is opportunity for public comment. This is the time if you have something to speak about that is not on our agenda. Okay, we'll move on then to regular business. Item number 10 is consider an appeal of the decision by the Minnehaw County Planning Commission to approve conditional use permit number 15-23 to allow a Class C dairy CAFO for 999 animal units on a property described as southeast one quarter, northeast one quarter, section 36, township 104 North Range? Is that right? Range 52 West, located at 26193 460th Avenue, deferred from May 19th. Kevin Hookman. And how we're going to handle this, I think, as we have heard all the testimony, so Kevin's going to kind of give us a recap and he's going to, and then answer some of the questions that we left him with last week, and then read the 14 points of the condition that had been approved previously. And at that point, we'll see if there's any new information from the proponents or the opponents. If there's no new information that has not already been, that's been, that has not been stated before, we will just move on to the commission's review of the points and how we want to handle it. So, okay, Kevin?
Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. As you know, this is an appeal of the CAFO. A group of neighbors have appealed it and signed a petition, as well as the petitioner also appealed in order to possibly remove a condition off of the listed conditions. The last meeting, two weeks ago, there were several questions raised, and I tried my best to answer as many questions as possible in a report. At this time, I wrote that there's nothing added from Kyle Elbers that's been submitted to the department this morning. Kyle did come into the planning office and show me a manure management plan that was well laid out, but I have not had a whole lot of time to review it. I glanced through it, it looked very nice. And then, other questions involved the timeline for general wastewater permit from the DNR. When I spoke to Kent Woods Manzy, he said that for a CAFO, it takes approximately 60 days, and this is from approval to, or from submittal to approval, that it does include a 30-day open period for public comment, and they try to conclude that into the 60 days. Information about the bridge, and I'll go through the PowerPoint while I talk about that. I have some added pictures that I went to the site. So this bridge that was located just south of the current farm came into question as the conditions. It is an older bridge. The Highway Department said that it's not in their records as part of their bridge system, and the township said that this is very old and it's already in kind of disrepair. It was also added.
Excuse me. Tell them. Say again, what? That is or is not on the county?
It is not on the county.
So it's a township responsibility?
So it's a township bridge. The township chairman said that, did note that he has seen it, that as little as two inches of rain has pushed water at or over the bridge in this location, so in general, it's in kind of rough shape. Some more pictures of the side rail. And this is the other side. You can see how the concrete is kind of crumbling on the top of the picture there. And that's the creek leaking away from the bridge. Then, I'll kind of go on to the, as long as we're talking about the roads, I did contact somebody from each township, and the general consensus was for the conditions of the roads that they had not had time to meet formally, and most of them have regular meetings tonight, I believe. One had a regular meeting last night, and I'm guessing we'll hear some more information about that. But they wanted to kind of get the feel of their own boards before they made any real comments about the haul road agreements. I asked about building engineered plans for the structure and the barns. The chief building inspector, Dan Kissler, has noted that he does have the ability to require engineering on any building, and he said because of the spans of the building and the size of the building being that it's 124 by 300 feet, he says he would require engineering on that size of building because it's very difficult to span a gap that large. Let's see. Then, yesterday I was, I looked into a little bit more, or heavily, about the setbacks requirement, the buffers. Okay. This is the map that I showed you two weeks ago, but with the mosaic imagery on the map. The house is located right at the tip of this bubble here, and it is clearly outside of that ring of the required buffers. I did, I believe that when I originally looked at it, I may have looked at the incorrect building and hall of the dwelling, and, but because of this, the house is about 200 feet further south of the building that I originally viewed and the, for the requirement for the buffers. So the buffers clearly are the requirement for the signed waivers clearly not needed. With that, I will read the conditions that were recommended by the, that were approved by the County Planning Commission for conditional use permit 1523. The facility shall be limited to 999 animal units. Copies of the nutrient management plan shall be approved and filed with the Minnehaw County Planning Department on an annual basis. Shelterbelt trees shall be planted along the entire length of the proposed lagoon in the north and west sides. Any dead trees shall be replaced within one season. The location of the shelterbelt trees shall be noted on the site plan and approved by the Minnehaw County Planning Department. The shelterbelt trees shall be planted utilizing a minimum of Minnehaw County Conservation District standards. Approval must be obtained by township for the construction of a new road access. An address sign must be purchased at the planning department and placed at the driveway of the facility. The lagoon must be in conformance with South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources design standards for any newly constructed waste containment facility. A registered professional engineer shall certify the plan specifications and the construction of the facility. The facility shall conform to the submitted site plans. Any minor changes may be approved by the staff in Minnehaw County Planning Department. Major changes will require an amendment to this permit in a public hearing. All driveways, parking, and loading areas within the dairy site must comply with minimum standards that are listed in section 1504 of the zoning ordinance for Minnehaw County. A rendering service must be used to pick up and remove dead animals from the property. A building permit is required for all structures prior to construction. The planning and zoning department reserves the right to enter and inspect the dairy CAFO at any time after proper notice of the owner to ensure that the property is in full compliance with the conditional use permit conditions approval in Minnehaw County zoning ordinance. A test well site must be dug downstream from the lagoon. Four water quality tests shall be completed within the first year of operation and samples taken as needed after that. If the water quality test fails to meet minimum standards, then testing shall take place four times a year until the problem is corrected. A general water pollution control permit for concentrated animal feed operations shall be approved from the DNR and a copy shall be filed with Minnehaw County Planning Department.
Thanks, Kevin. If there is any new information from the proponent or the applicant, this would be your time to come forward. If you have something new.
We have had meetings.
You want to just give your name and address, please?
Kyle Elbers, 26193 460th Avenue.
Thank you.
We met with Wellington Township last night. There will be no road haul agreement. There's just, well, it's a township-wide agreement that, you know, if people are coming out fields when the roads are muddy and such and pulling mud up, you got to clean them. Just, that's for anybody and everybody. Humble Township, we met with this morning at 8:00. Same thing. No road haul agreement. Same philosophy. Hartford, that meeting's tonight, and Wall Lake is actually a week away, but everybody we've talked to within the township has expressed interest that they're in the same philosophy, but we have not had meetings with them yet.
Did anybody address the bridge issue?
The bridge issue, I, I talked to, I've been talking with Paul Koschbach, I believe, with the Secretary of the Egg. He got ahold of the DOT and their inspectors. You know, he's looking into different things they can do to help the township, and technically the bridge is large enough that the county is, does have the responsibility to help with the funding. So he's looking into possible things that the state can do to help get this funded. If the road is, if the bridge is posted, we'll honor, you know, the post and we'll be using alternate routes to go around it, so. In regards to the landscape plan, I know Kevin contacted, you know, the trees and everything are going to have to be based on the Conservation District standards. Conservation District has not got back to us with those standards, so it's pretty hard to put up a map, but it will be by their standards, you know. However, you know, it's however they want it, you know, I guess that's, that's how that will be done. And then... And then, as far as I know, I've talked to almost all the neighbors in the county or in the area. I got signatures from most, well, not from most, but from, I got 23 signatures, so, I mean, and even the people who didn't sign, I've discussed with them, you know, most of them were, don't have a position on it. They don't want to sign either or. I've tried to answer everybody's questions, and I've talked to not everybody, but almost everybody I could, so. And yes, I got a manure management plan put together by Central Crop Consulting. Includes setbacks and everything else in the presentation. I know another thing with landscaping last time was brought up that on our property, we have 50-foot of slope on our section of land. Sounds drastic, but that's a 1% slope. It's actually ideal, so I guess that's all I have. If you have any more questions.
Otherwise, we can do the opponents first and then come back to them if that'd be all right, so, thank you. Is there, is there anything new on the opponent's side? If you have something new, you can come up.
Sure.
Give your name and address.
Dennis Kapperman, 45994, 263rd Street. Current owner of the half section directly to the east of the proposed property. I'm here with basic, really just a simple request, I guess, is can somebody, and I hope Kyle can shed light on this, and this will make things a whole lot easier for everybody. Could somebody explain to me, or give me a distance? I don't know if this will come.
Kevin?
Come through. From the half-mile line, you've got your blue, your center blue square. It looks like the half-mile line is just to the north. Give me kind of a location that this, this proposed dairy is going to be. I'm concerned if it's too far north, the, what I, what I've got drafted up is the current oats field. If it's in that vicinity, all the watershed from that facility then will go under the road through an 18-inch culvert and directly run across my property where the, yeah, where the arrow's at.
Yeah, where this box is, is that's where the 10-acre parcel that he's trying to...
Right. From the north line of that 10-acre parcel to the half-mile line, could you give me an idea? I mean, I've got some measurements here. I, you know, I'm sure Kyle will address those when we get done here. From the half-mile line, where does that start? I mean, as far as feet-wise? My concern is, if it's on the backside of the hill, all the water will run directly across my property, whereas if it's on the front side of the hill that drains to the south, then it will just affect their property before it gets to the creek. So I'm concerned that improper location could create drastic erosion.
I believe it'd be, this is mini-map here.
So I have an image of mini-map here, which is our county map, GIS map that we have publicly available, and this is a measurement showing approximately where that land would start, that, about 500 to 600 feet from that half-mile.
And then the buildings are beyond that?
And then, yeah, then the buildings would be somewhere in between about where my hand is at.
Yep. And right now on his site map, he's got them on the south side of that. I'm assuming it's the south side?
Yeah. In between this hand and that blue line, yep.
Right.
You said that's about 500-some feet, Kevin?
That's the edge of the 10 acres, and then he's going to be south of that.
And I just, you know, if I can show this quick, just to give you some indication my concern here, I got some measurements using the GPS that I have. This is currently the half-mile line to the north corner of their quarter. The distance from the half-mile line to the edge of the oats field is 871 feet. From my visual, what I see, anything put in north of that 871 feet, all of that water will come through an 18-inch culvert and cut through my field to get to the creek. They've got a permit notice at 955 feet, current driveway at 1050 feet. I'm concerned, my concern is, at what point that proposed facility and which way the water is going to shed? Because putting up a big facility or a yard like that creates like a parking lot effect. If we get a rain, it's all going to run downhill. If it takes the wrong direction to the north and crosses this road, we're going to have major erosion through this field. I mean, that's, that's the normal glacier watershed, and I've got maps here showing that. So if it's moved too far north, it's going to directly affect me in watershed and erosion. I hope that doesn't take...
I think all of those things will be addressed when they have a building permit. Correct? So that isn't actually what we're talking about today because we're not talking about the building permit. We're talking about the permit to actually move forward.
Correct.
Yes.
Is this not a good time to address my concerns?
Well, I think, I think it's, Kevin, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that'd be more addressed when we get to the building permit point as we know what the engineering structure is of the building and how it's, the engineering goes.
Well, one thing I would have to say is he does have this, the site plan, and he described it as, this is somewhere in that vicinity, and the site plan, he has it on the north side, where most of that is on the south side. He will have to address grading when he does the building, and grading is part of this plan, so it would be a time to address it if it is an issue of where drainage goes.
This time or when they get to the site plan?
It would be this time because this is when the site plan is approved during the conditional use permit.
But the engineering part isn't approved until after the CAFO?
Yeah, so the engineering...
Am I getting this backwards, Kirsten? Sorry, I'm going to ask Kirsten if I'm getting it backwards.
If I may, commissioners, if I could turn your attention, I'll just cite the part of the ordinance. It's 12.10 subsection C2. At the time of the application, the applicant is required to submit a site plan including the landscaping plan designed to assist in the dispersal of odors, as well as a grading plan that is designed to help keep the pens and solid waste containment areas dry. That is required upon application, and so maybe it would be good to inquire of the applicant whether those handwritten drawings and narrative consists of the entire application, I guess. I'm unclear on that right now because I, I'm seeing binders and stuff, and so I don't know what has been submitted at this point.
Kevin, is there a grading plan submitted?
I have not seen a grading plan yet, no.
Mr. Elbers, do you have a grading plan? Sorry. Since we're talking about this point, I'm going to ask the question.
Well, first of all, this is on the south slope. We're not building up the north slope like Dennis is worried about. As far as containment of the facilities and grading plan, everything is under roof.
Uh, as far as containment of the facilities and grading plan, everything is under roof, so the wa, stormwater will have to go through a stormwater system, um, and that will be directed towards the creek, not across Denny Kafferman's property. Um, no, we do not have an actual grade plan. The grade on that hilltop is level, um, and that will come with the en, you know, the engineer, I talked to Todd from Eisen Braun, and he says he starts as soon as the conditional use per, permit's done, that's how he usually does it. He said that's, that Maha is, uh, is one of the few counties that has professional staff that covers most of that, so.
And it's, so it's on the south slope?
It's on the south slope, it is not, there's a hilltop there, it heads towards our place.
Okay. Commissioner Bender?
So, do you have a landscape plan? I mean, my understanding is you're waiting for information, so you don't have a landscape plan right now?
The landscape plan amounts to where the trees can be placed. My personal opinion is, there really should be trees. I mean, I work for the Wallack Sanitary District, there's no trees on the lagoons, there's no trees at Parker, there's no anywhere else. The trees affect my ventilation system on my setup, and there is no, it's not that I need to protect the wind from blowing across my neighbor right across the road either. So, this is a requirement of the Conservation District, and I'm going to fulfill that requirement, and I, but it will be at their specs, where they want them. So, I can draw up a map saying, I'm gonna plant a tree here, but if Conservation District says, "No, we don't want a tree there," then I, what, what's, yeah, I can't be planting one there. They got things, they want brush trees, regular trees, four rows, X mile feet from lagoon, X mile feet over here. I mean, we can, we can draw all that out, but my, as my neighbors brought up many times, is the ground can change from here to there. So, we start digging a lagoon, and we hit a gravel area, and we have to move our lagoon fifty feet here, or fifty feet there. We're still outside the setbacks, but the lagoon has to adjust based on the, on the ground, which is all clay, but you never know, once you dig, you can probe all you want, you might hit a spot that's gravel. We have to adjust that, so, I mean, I can draw up plans saying, this is where the trees are, but at the end of the day, the trees aren't gonna be, don't have to be required to even be planted till a year and a half after construction, 'cause they don't require them beforehand, they're in the way then, and they also have it set so you plant them at ideal times to plant the trees. You don't just throw trees out there, because sometimes it is too dry, so they give you a year and a half to plant those trees. So, no, there isn't a landscaping, um, map right now, but, you know, that's something that's going to adjust based on how this, you know, at the end of the day, we have to meet the setbacks of the road, setbacks of the neighbors, we're meeting all those, and it's gonna be on this parcel of ground, in this general location. So, as far as the official landscape plan, I mean, things, things are gonna, could very easily change, and until we get, construction starts, we won't know those things, so.
Commissioner Bender, did you have another comment?
I have a question for Kirsten. Kirsten, so, I mean, our obligation is to approve this in accordance with our ordinances-
Correct.
And our ordinances require a landscape plan and a grading plan, so do we have the authority to approve this without those?
I read that as a requirement under a KFO ordinance, I'd be, I mean, I can direct you to the, to the ordinance number that-
I think we had it. Which we were provided, so, we do have a copy of that.
I mean, that's my reading of it, I mean, you can read the provision for yourself and see what you think, but I, I think it's pretty plain, maybe this is something that staff could, uh, address too, in how they view the plans and the sufficiency of them going forward with the application.
I mean, that's, Conservation District, there's gonna be trees on the west side, grass around the facilities, I mean, i, if that's what you guys wanna see for a plan, I can submit that, but at the same time, you can't, I can't detail it anymore than that until construct, you know, things are gonna adjust for construction, so.
I think, go ahead.
Is Scott here?
Yeah, is Scott around?
I'd like, I'd like to hear what staff thinks of the, if you could. Thank you.
Well, uh, while Scott comes in, maybe I can address, uh, one thing that I would bring into effect is, because there was no, uh, site plan submitted, uh, it was added in the conditions, pretty detailed, that where he needed to plant trees. Um, it says that it needs to be on the north and west sides, um, uh, of the proposed lagoon, the entire length, uh, so that, that was in an attempt to, uh, if there was no landscape plan, that we'd make sure that he would have sufficient landscaping around the lagoon.
Here's Scott. Scott, we're wondering, since it's addressed in fourteen points, does he have to have a written-out plan of where these trees go prior to approval?
Uh, in my opinion is that the, the conditions that address the two rows of trees really comprises his landscaping plan.
Okay.
And, uh, Mr. Elbers is correct. The, the exact location of those trees may vary, but I think in essence, the planning commission required those trees to meet the landscaping requirements.
Okay.
What about the, what about a grading plan? There's no grading plan-
I would say the gr, the grading plan is deficient. He did not submit a grading plan, and that's something that could, could easily be just showing that site plan where those proposed structures are gonna be, and how he proposes to grade that to accommodate the, the flow of the water. Uh, that, that, it, it can be as simple as that, to suffice for a grading plan.
Can it be condition number fifteen added on here, that the grading plan must be submitted?
Sure. It, it's a requirement?
It's already a requirement.
Required by the ordinance.
Yeah, I know.
You, you can make it a condition, but it's a requirement of the ordinance that he provides, that he provides a grading plan.
I'm just trying to get the chicken before the egg here, or whatever, and that is, do we have to defer this, because the grading plan is not in this, or do we put it on as a condition, and then it is part of the condition that you cannot move forward until it's on here? That's what I'm asking.
I believe he should defer it, I think he should provide us a grading plan.
Okay.
Why wasn't he told that?
It, it's in the ordinance, he was told that.
Your office told him to submit a grading plan.
He's been told to submit a grading-
And he did not.
He has not.
I was informed to provide a site plan, and last meeting, we were informed to invite, to do a grading, or a landscape plan. There was no mention of grading plan, uh, that comes into engineering.
No, I agree with Kyle, I mean, we're finding, every time he shows up, we're finding some of the nitpicking idea of, you know, the only difference between the, the landscape plan that he showed us and one that a professional landscape would be, is that they have a computer program that'll plant trees there, where he just shows where they're gonna be, and I, you know, I, I gather, this is a pretty expensive operation, I mean, you're, even doing your own work, you're gonna have a whole lot of money in this.
This is gonna be about four-point-three million-dollar operation.
Yeah, okay, no, we're not talking about minor things here. Um, one question I do have is, would you agree to a stipulation that said that the lagoon will drain to the south?
Yes.
So, that there's no question for the gentleman that had a issue with the old-
The lagoon won't drain, just to make that clear, so.
Yeah.
But the facilities will drain to the south, so.
I mean, there won't be anything that moves to the north, it'll move to the south.
The facilities are to the south of the property.
And I, I guess I would, you guys would just have to determine the, the language, but I, I, I just hope we won't keep digging them. I wish you'd bring up the, the, um, new map we have, what, what do you call it, uh, whatever we did, the remapping last year, because it'll show us a little clearer, I think, what,
This one?
No, no, um, what do they, but-
Pictometry?
It's on connect, what's the, the pictometry? Can you bring that one up? Do you use pictometry? It's in your department.
There it is. It's just gonna look like a field deck.
Well, no, it shows the house, it shows, uh-
Yeah, it shows the, it shows the-
Okay, now, if you get rid of, yeah, okay. We spent a lot of money on this, I don't know why we don't use it. Now, bring it down so it looks straight instead of, is that a pictometry map, or is it a, uh?
There it is, you can see the field layout.
Okay, make, can you make it larger or smaller or something?
You can see the draw that moves through the middle field to the west of the facility.
Where, yeah, well, I've got a big, much larger map here, shows the whole section.
Well, um, this pictometry is kind of this, looking from the south, an angle towards the field, um, and the grade is low enough that it's difficult to see with the pictometry, um, but this, right around where this loop is, would be the approximate location of-
Okay, where, where's the location of the calf, of the-
Right where this loop is. And this is the existing farm.
As you can see, to the west of where the facilities are, there is a draw there that can, takes the water from the neighbors to the north, all the way down-
Down to the south.
Across our trees, into the road ditch, and across through our driveway to the creek.
Which, which map is that? Is that the old map, or the new, that's the new one, isn't it?
This is the, yeah, two thousand and fourteen-
I mean, mine shows green and, and a, okay, I-
Commissioner Bender, did you have a comment?
Well, I do have a comment, I mean, I understand, um, I understand your frustration, I understand Commissioner Kelly's frustration, I'm frustrated with the process, I mean, I would think, we'd all be frustrated with the process right now. Um, but, in my world, an applicant has a legal obligation to provide information required by the ordinance. Whether you were told to provide a grading plan or not, it's very clearly laid out in the ordinance, um, and we have a, I mean, our obligation is to provide approval in accordance with our ordinance, so that it withstands legal challenge later on, should one of the neighbors decide to challenge this. And so, I don't see how we can move forward and approve this without all the requirements met.
And my question, I guess, would be for you, is, I've read through this quite a few times, how, what is, is this a condition of the conditional use permit, or is it required to get the conditional use permit?
It is required to have an application come before the planning commission and then the county commission after that, it's a, it's a, it's a requirement for, with, to be submitted with the application, that's my plain reading of the ordinance, I mean, I would, that's what I would say it says.
The grading plan could be as much as his person who's building writing up something with a grading plan.
Right, as I, as I understand it, what your submissions to date have been is the narrative that you had, and then the building outlines, correct?
So, it needs a narrative or something from the person who's going to build it, as to what the grading plans would be, even if there aren't any, you'll have to have something.
Of the lay of the ground, I mean, see the lay of the ground.
And to be clear, I'm not trying to direct how your application should be put together, that's not really my role to do that, I'm just saying, when I read the ordinance is, that, that those two things at least are required, so.
Commissioner Kelly?
Um, I can see we're gonna defer this, but it seems to me it's a communication problem, that, that he's told something in one meeting and interprets it something else, and then all of a sudden, and I would suggest that you go up and sit down with the planning department and get the prob, get the, you know, they'll tell you what they need, to come to us to say, "Here, this complies with all statutes." Um, then come back and do this. Uh, you, you may have to spend a couple, three hours up there with them, but I think, I think, to some extent, the planning department has to help the applicant also, because the planning department knows all these laws we got, and there, you know, there are reams of them, and we can't expect the individuals to know all those laws, but, but, uh, I, I think the planning department has an obligation, as, you know, Gene mentioned, that the applicant has an obligation to comply, the planning department, I believe, has an obligation to help him reach a, reach that area where he can comply. Um, I got one other comment if I can.
Yep, that's fine, yep.
On the, on the roads, um, you were talking about four different townships there, or three?
Four townships meet at our corner, so, three of them have roads going there, but we're the-
Which, which corner, the, the four-sixty-first, or?
Half-mile south of the, or quarter-mile south of the facility there. That, right there is where all four townships meet.
Oh, okay.
Three have roads going there, but all four townships meet there.
And the bridge is in-
Humboldt Township.
Humboldt, and Humboldt Township has an obligation to keep that road open, I mean, that, and I don't know what their reserves are, but it'd be interesting to see that, you know, I mean, they have money put away for those situations. I don't know if that's a bridge, it looks a bridge, it'd probably be replaced with a culvert, but, um, I, I guess, you know, the township, I, I, I don't understand, they, they won't give you the, uh, explain that road permit to me again.
They, they're not requiring a haul road permit.
They're not requiring?
No, they're not.
They're not requiring.
None of them are, okay, so that's not an issue?
That's not an issue.
Okay, okay, so the bridge is the only issue, probably, because-
Yeah, the bridge is-
And you can go north if you had to.
Commissioner Kelly, I did speak with Highway Department a little bit this morning, and obviously, they haven't seen this bridge, because they, they feel it's not part of our responsibility, and that is a county responsibility, so maybe some more looking into that needs to be done, but if it is a small enough bridge, it would qualify for our pipe replacement or culvert replacement. DJ, you wanna just address that just a minute? I did actually give him kind of a forewarning that I might pull him up on the bridge issue.
'Cause these are issues that are gonna come up again, and I think-
Right, and I think we need to address all issues before we defer this, and then move forward, so DJ, the bridge.
Hey, Commissioners, DJ Boothby, Highway Superintendent, I'll just give you a real quick briefing of the structure. Um, again, like you said, we're not real familiar with this structure, because it's not part of our system, uh, part of our inventory, however, structures of this size, uh, when they're greater than sixteen-and-a-half square feet of opening, uh, they do qualify for a provision in statute that allows townships to petition to the county commission board, uh, for the county to replace the structure, and then the township is responsible for five-hundred dollars of that cost. That statute is probably from the nineteen-thirties or forties, and five-hundred dollars was probably a lot larger share back then. Uh, in lieu of, of following that statute, uh, what our department did many years ago was, uh, start, uh, accepting basically an application or a request from townships to replace a culvert informally, not through the county board, and, and when that is approved and we have budget for it, uh, we pay for the pipe, and then the townships pay for the installation of that, uh, culvert. And so, that's about half the cost, a half-cock share instead of five-hundred dollars for the township, and, um, and that's worked out very well for us. Uh, each of the last couple of years, we have significantly increased our budget, this year we have twenty thousand dollars to do that. It's pretty well, uh, spoken for already this year, uh, we could certainly add some if that was the county's desire to do that, and we have, uh, budget left over from other projects that we've had good bids on, and so we could do that, uh, otherwise, they could wait until next year and, and, uh, make an application to the department, and we could, we could help them with that replacement.
Okay, so the bridge, I think, is a mute point that can be fixed, for taking care of that.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you, DJ.
There are provisions, yeah.
I wanna know if there's any other things we're missing before we defer this, if there's any other concerns about anything, do we have to have a landscaping plan? I think his landscaping plan is addressed, and, I mean, I have seen in the past, when we've had conditional use permits, where they do have whoever, just draw out a thing that says, "Here's the lagoon, here's the setbacks of four feet," and they just draw a picture, it wouldn't be him, but it would be Conservation Department. Do you wanna address that, Scott?
I just wanted to, uh, give some clear, uh, direction on what I see for a grading plan.
Okay.
The grading plan is, doesn't have to be engineered, it can be drawn up by the applicant, showing where his buildings are gonna go, how he is going to grade that general area, so that the runoff from the roofs of that building, how they are going to, how he's going to address runoff from the facility. It doesn't, doesn't have to be engineered, but he has to show us basically how he's gonna grade the property, and which way he's going to, uh, force the water to flow off his site, 'cause there will be some runoff, as there's runoff from any property, but there'll be runoff from the roof, the roofs of those buildings, he'll need to show us generally how that property's going to be graded. He'll need to show us generally how that property is going to be graded and which way the water's going to flow. It does, it's not complicated.
So would you help him do that?
I'm not going to help him do it.
No, I mean, I mean...
I just, I will help him. I will, I will draw for him. I will explain it for him.
Right. That's what I mean.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bender.
I'm just curious too, because this is my first time through this process. So does he have to give more specifics about on whether the buildings are on the north side or the south side or how many feet they are from property lines and the issues that the opponent was addressing?
He, he can, generally, we like to see a, an approximation of where those buildings are going to go on the property with the understanding that when it comes time for construction, as Mr. Elbers indicated, they can shift around, you know, within reason. It may shift five, 10 feet, 20 feet, one way or the other, and that's not, that's not of significance. If he's moving it from one side of the quarter section to the other side of the quarter section, that's something that we're going to have to address then.
Yeah. So at this point, his site plan is appropriate for what we need. It's just not have a...
Generally, yes, yes. It doesn't have the grading portion of that included, which he could easily show by, he, he is the property owner and I think he's very familiar with, with the lay of the land. I think he has in his mind how he sort of sees this being developed and he'll have a good, he should also know in his mind which way he's going to drain the water off his site. Because there will be, there will be runoff, there won't be runoff off the lagoons because as he, as he has indicated, that's all contained, that's, there is no runoff. It's, it's a system that's designed to be, to hold the water. They, they pump it all out. So there's not runoff from these lagoons, but there is, there is runoff from the site, from the roofs of those buildings, and he's going to generally have to show where that's going.
And that's where we want it to go south. Is that correct?
Well, that's where the, that's where the opponent or the neighboring property owner would like it to all run south. That is yet to be determined from the applicant where he's going to grade that property for the flow to run to.
Well, Scott, is it possible for him to sit down with Kevin and, and get this thing so that when it comes back to us, these questions are answered? We bring up new ones and then, no, we don't know that, or we haven't got that, or I misunderstood that.
We can sit down with the applicant.
Yeah, because I don't think we should be pushing this until eternity and, and I just think that, I really feel the planning department has some obligation there to help, help the citizens who are our customers. And, and yes, we have laws to protect, but also I think we have, we have to also serve.
Are we missing anything else on this that we need to bring forward at this point?
Not to my knowledge.
Kirsten, do you have something that's beating at your heart?
Read Section 12.10. Read the ordinances and the incompliance with that. It's four and a half pages. Some people's tax forms are shorter, so.
So...
It's four and a half pages.
Make sure it's all there. Because I don't want to do this again to anybody in this room. This is crazy. We don't, I mean, our schedules are crazy too to try to get five commissioners here. Any other questions from the commission?
I would make a motion to defer.
Commissioner Kelly? Yeah, I would...
I don't know how long though.
Well, I just did, I was, I was wondering if we can do it even next week? We should be done with all this except for a few paperwork things to be brought forward?
Well, let's make sure the commission's here too.
Well, that's just it, everybody will be here next week. No, they'll not be here next week.
I know, and it's not the case.
Okay, so when are we all going to be here?
As, as soon as I know that you will have all five commissioners, because I know Commissioner Bender will be gone next Tuesday. I believe you're gone the following Tuesday on the 16th. So the 23rd is the soonest that I know, barring any unforeseen circumstances, that we'll have all five.
Okay. Do we want to do it with four or do we want to do it with five?
I think we should do it with five.
I don't care. I don't care, so...
Well, I just, you know, you never know when one could accidentally be, you know, sickness or anything else.
Yeah, and if we had a tie vote at, at 2-2, then we're stuck again.
We go back to another week deferral. So I would move, we move, defer this to the, to the June 23rd. Is that the date?
Again, that, from what I know now.
Yeah, based, to the June 23rd meeting.
So I have a motion to defer to the June 23rd meeting. Sorry, Mr. Elbers, you gotta do it and we don't want to keep bringing it back with three people. Doesn't work either. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to defer to the 23rd with planning and zoning to help assist to complete this application so we can move forward one way or another. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
I want to, I, I hate to do this too, but I think, I think we need to get a date where you can get a firm answer and...
Yep. If you have questions, sir, you'll have to ask staff people. We're going to move on to item number 11. Consider a motion to approve the county, Minnehaw County 2015-2016 malt beverage license renewal
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Blitz from the Auditor's Office. And as was said, the malt beverage renewal application for the 2015-2016 licensing period have been received by the Auditor's Office. State law no longer requires public hearing for renewals unless within the current licensing period the licensee or their employees have been subjected to criminal, criminal penalty or the license has been suspended. None of the establishments have had any such penalties or suspensions during this period. The state's attorney, planning and zoning, and the sheriff's office have all reviewed the renewal applications. There were no violations or concerns reported by the state's attorney office or the sheriff's office. Scott Anderson, the planning and zoning director, reported a zoning violation associated with a business sign for the Riviera by Rocos. A memo, a memo from Scott is attached with the details regarding this issue. Scott will also be at the meeting and Scott's here, so he can answer those questions if you want. And also in attendance in the office, the, the audience today is Matt Sapari. He's the owner of the Riviera by Rocos and he can answer some questions that you may have as well. I'm going to go through the, the following list for the public recording of this here. Although you folks certainly could read them as well as I can. The malt beverage license renewal applications were received from the following. The Alibi, the Buffalo Trading Post, Friendly's Baltic, I-90 Speedway, Pump &amp; Pack, State Line Casino, Thompson-Schult American Legion, the WH Lion Fairgrounds, Wild Prairie Winery, Baltic Corner, Chasers Food and Spirits, Hunter's Point Shooting Club, Midway Service, Runner Corner, Straw Bale, Straw Bale Winery, Ultimate Golf, Wall Lake Oil Company, Yogi Bear Camp Resort, Bottoms Up, Crook's Gun Club, Houston Speedway, Northern Links Golf Course, we're in the Riviera by Rocos and 38 Roadhouse, 38 Roadhouse, excuse me, Uncle Ed's Meat Specialty, or Uncle Ed's Specialty Meats, and finally, Wild Water West Water, Water Park. The action requested today is to consider a motion to approve the 2015-2016 malt beverage license renewal applications. I stand by for questions.
Okay. Any questions for Bob?
I have a question. I'm, I'm curious, what, what effect does the fact that there's a zoning violation have on the applicant?
I could explain that, but I think I'm going to defer to Scott on that, okay?
It has no effect on the sale of the property other than we, I have been asked in the past to review these for any kind of zoning violations. Typically, when there is a zoning violation, once we notify the property owner, it is quickly resolved because they would like to continue to get their, their license. Matt's is a little bit, Mr. Sapari's is a little bit different situation because he has some other circumstances that are making it difficult for him to remove those, the sign out of the right of way, and I'll let him explain that. But we, we review all the liquor licenses, beer licenses, on off sale licenses, and I'll let you know if there's any zoning violations. That's all.
Commissioner Bender.
So to your knowledge, has a application or license been denied based on an existing zoning violation?
No. They've, they've always rectified the, the situation or the violation.
Prior to the issuance of the license?
Prior to the renewal or the issuance.
Yeah, renewal. Okay.
Thank you, Scott. Matt, did you want to say anything? If you'd just give your name and address, please.
Good morning. Matt Sapari, owner of Riviera by Rocos. Our address is 2665 481st Avenue, Brandon, South Dakota. The reason I'm here today is to explain the issue that we have with the zoning in regards of the sign, the monument sign. We're currently in litigation with the general contractor. They had put that sign there without my approval, so even though we are three feet in the right of way, according to my attorney and the lawsuit that we have, we cannot remove it until that gets settled. And that could be anywhere from three to six months. I wish I had a better answer about that. But as soon as that is taken care of, we will remove it so we are in accordance to the, to the zoning.
Commissioner Bender.
Mr. Sapari, I'm curious why your legal counsel is telling you that you can't move the sign now? I mean, you can take pictures of the sign, you can measure the sign, you could provide the evidence that the sign was placed incorrectly. I don't understand why the litigation bars you from moving the sign and bringing it into compliance.
According to the contract that we have with the general contractor, if there was to be litigation in order to fix any problems, we can't fix them until the lawsuit is settled.
So it was a part of your contract with the contractor?
Yes.
It doesn't actually make any sense because if you had problems with your roof, you'd have to fix it to preserve your assets, so I don't understand that at all.
Correct. We also have other, about 56 other issues with the building that we're trying to resolve, and I have not resolved any of those yet until we get closer to some kind of solution to the case.
So you're living with a mess?
I am. One day at a time.
Yeah. And your legal counsel thinks this will take six months? Because litigation can take quite a long time.
We are hoping it's a lot sooner, but I am not sure.
But you've also been in litigation for a while? I mean, this is not, this isn't something that popped up yesterday?
No.
Yeah.
It's been about a year.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I move for approval.
A motion to approve. Is there a second?
That's approval of all.
Approval of all. Is there a second? Did you want me to do motion deny, motion dies for lack of a second? Yes.
I'll advise you that June 30th, these licenses expire and if, if through the timing for some reason or other, we don't approve them now, it could be that they lose the 4th of July weekend, which is, I would imagine, in your business a fairly good weekend.
I'll second it if we could have some discussion for discussion purposes.
I have a motion and a second to approve discussion.
I'm curious, Kirsten, maybe this is a question for you. Can we approve these with some kind of condition for Rocos that, that this be rectified within some period of time?
I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's within the scope of, of what the statute lays out.
I'm wondering, does the statute lay out that we can't approve one when there's a violation of a...
No.
So that is not, yeah, we can. And since it's in litigation, we can make that decision.
And I'm sorry, I'm trying to do my statutory search here while we're talking. You know, the violations that we talk about for revocation or suspension of a license is generally ones related to an offense under Title 35, which is the alcoholic beverages title. I don't think there's been any evidence presented here that this facility has done that. My caveat as your legal advisor would be that what is troubling about the sign is the continued nuisance violation. And I don't know, while, while we appreciate Scott bringing that to our attention for purposes of remedying the nuisance, which is important, I'm not sure there's necessarily a nexus with the licensing, except to argue maybe about compliance with the law in general, about being a law-abiding business. I mean, you've heard some extenuating circumstances here today from the, from the landowner, but...
And these are renewed annually?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I'm okay then. Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve all liquor licenses. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Good luck with your lawsuit. We'll hope it's done before next year.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item number 12 is consider a motion to supplement $729,510 to the fiscal year 2015 Minnehaw County Highway Budget from the Highway Fund representing unanticipated revenues from the South Dakota Department's Surface Transportation Program, STP Fund. DJ Boothby.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothby, Highway Superintendent. As a result of the, the change in statute this year, the highway department in Minnehaw County is receiving unanticipated revenues, revenues that we had not budgeted for this year. Included with that are $679,483 of STP funds that we will receive July 1st and $443,951 that we should receive about, on or about September 30th. That totals $1,123,484. And so of that, we would like to supplement $729,510 into the 2015 budget for use for a beginning design of three construction projects that we wish to construct in 2016. And I briefed you on those projects last, last week. And then also move up the purchase of two pieces of equipment from the 2016 budget year to the 2015 budget year. That would be two asphalt message, or two electronic message boards and one asphalt patching machine for a total of $99,510 for the equipment purchases. And if you have any questions, I can answer them or, or try to get you an answer right now. Otherwise, we briefed you on this last week and that's our request.
Any questions for DJ? Commissioner Kelly?
What happened? Now, this money was, we're just going to work on your 16 budget pretty quick, but this was in there. Did you take it out of your request now?
It's taken out and with the idea that depending on how today goes, we still have time to adjust the 2016 budget if you wish to keep it in 2016 instead of moving up to 2015.
But there are some issues if we wait until 16 of when we can get the asphalt patcher on and...
Yeah, and, and the issue with the asphalt patcher is there is a lead time. And so assuming that we would make that order the first week of January, we would probably receive it after the springtime asphalt patching season. And so we would be able to use it in the fall, but not the spring of 2016. And if we're able to purchase it now, we would actually hopefully be able to use it in the fall of 2015 and both the spring and fall of 2016. And with the electronic message boards, we always have a need to use those and, and just provide information to the traveling public and, and we could always use more of those. I did also have a, a quick conversation with Lyndy Young, an emergency management department, and he feels like he might be able to make a request towards the end of this year for a partial payment of the message boards, similar to the last time that we purchased message boards. And so using his grant funding, a portion of this $41,736 could be reimbursed.
You'll still have, what, a million six in your, in the STP bank?
Yeah, $1.6 million.
And that gets paid out over how many years then?
Over five years. And 2015 has been the first of those five years.
Okay.
And, and those annual payments are the ones that we received September 30th and they're approximately $444,000.
Any other questions? Is there a motion on the supplement?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the supplement to the Highway Fund. All those in, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 13 is a consider a motion to authorize the purchase of one Carfco asphalt patcher two with options in the amount, with options in the amount of $75,774 from contract number 82570 with Brock White Companies LLC competitive bid and awarded by the state of Minne, of Minnesota.
Commissioner, that's 57,000.
Yeah. Oh, excuse me, I don't know what I said, but $57,774. Okay.
Again, Commissioners, this was briefed last week and then, and the previous agenda item. This is for the actual purchase of the asphalt patcher through Brock White of Sioux Falls. They have a Sioux Falls office. And so we are asking for your approval on the asphalt patcher machine.
Moves to approve.
Okay. Motion?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 14 is consider a motion to authorize the purchase of two Vermac PCMS 1500 chargeable message boards with options in the amount of $41,730 from contract number 73384 from Street Smart Rentals competitive bid and awarded by the state of Minnesota. Get it right.
And Commissioner, just to correct that number again, $41,736.
Did I say it wrong again?
You said $30.
Moves to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. I will let you finish the next one.
That's why I had to send you one.
Number 15, consider a motion to authorize the purchase of two 2016 Mack trucks. Now you can finish it.
Commissioners, this is a purchase that we have made a request for twice already this year, and, and they were deferred for various times in the previous requests. They are for the purchase of two Mack trucks through Nuss Truck Group of Roseville, Minnesota, which is the Minnesota dealer for Mack trucks. And locally, we have Shehan Mack, and Shehan Mack has actually been the one that we've been coordinating with for this purchase, and they would execute the sale and definitely do the service for us on these trucks should we get approved to purchase them. The contract is through the Minnesota State Bid, and it is in a total amount of $236,000, or $236,516.42, which is $118,528.21 each. And so this is for the chassis portion of the snowplow truck. We had Commissioners Heiburger and Bender out a couple of weeks ago looking at the condition of our trucks. And after having those meetings, we decided that we could move forward with this request with the idea that they would more than likely be supported this time. So if you have any questions about the condition of the trucks we'd be replacing, or, or the purchase process or anything like that, I can answer them now.
I will have to say that the pictures that were presented to us on April 7th were no way representation of what is actually the issues with the trucks. And after seeing them firsthand, different pitchers would have probably made this go differently. They were in serious condition, beyond serious, critical condition.
They are and need a serious repair, replacement. And, and we try to take good pictures, but it's hard to take good pictures of those types of pieces.
Right. It is.
Moves to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there a comment?
I was just going to make a correction, that you said Commissioner Bender was out there and it's really Commissioner Benega who knows way more about trucks than Commissioner Bender, and so I defer to Commissioner.
I thought that was funny. I thought, I didn't think you went.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. Just want, somebody, an expert, went out and looked and agreed, so...
Yeah. I have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 16 is authorize the county auditor to publish notice to bidders for the purchase of two hydraulic and combination 15-foot 201 SS dump and spreader bodies for tandem axle trucks deferred from April 7th.
And this request is just a subsequent, a subsequent request for the truck purchase. This is the actual body that fits onto the chassis. They are stainless steel bodies that we hope to get 10 to 12 years of service if they're properly maintained, maintained. So we will do a notice to bidders and, and receive bids in six to eight weeks on June... I don't have an exact date in front of me. But we will receive bids in six to eight weeks if you guys approve the notice to bidders.
Any other questions? Motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 17 is consider a resolution establishing a 40 mile per hour speed limit on a portion of Minnehaw County Highway 120, 353rd Street, at the eastern city limits of Garrettson.
Commissioners, a week to two weeks ago, we'd received a request from a landowner that lives just east of Garrettson on Highway 120, County Highway 120. And that request was to take a look at the speed limit as it comes into Garrettson from the east. And the speed limit changes on the county highway of 55 as it comes into town to a speed limit of 40, right at the limit of this, uh, city limits or municipal limits. And there are a few urban sprawl-type housing units east of city limits, and, and we were made aware that there are some kids that live in those houses, and, and they walk into town to go to school, and they, they're out playing around in the front yard and stuff like that. There's a graphic, and the, the eastern edge of the city limits is right here, and those are the houses just to the right on the picture that are not in city limits. And so we did evaluate it, and we do agree with the request that we could extend that 40 mile per hour speed limit to the east, so vehicles start slowing down before they get to those houses. And so we drew up this resolution and are making the request for modifying the speed limit upon your approval. We will go and change the signage out there.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 18 is a briefing on proposed solicitation for professional engineering design services for Highway 149 reconstruction and the Redwood Boulevard Bridge replacement projects. D.J. Boothey, this is a briefing.
Commissioners, we're not asking for any kind of approval today. Just want to communicate to you and, and see if you have any response back or, or things to say. We do actually do typically evaluate three different ways to solicit proposals from a consultant for engineering services, professional services. Sometimes we may advertise and publish formal requests for proposals, and sometimes we may just send informal letters to selected firms requesting a proposal. And then sometimes we do a sole source solicitation where we schedule a meeting with a single consultant, and we negotiate a contract only with contacting one consultant. We usually would do that for a smaller project that doesn't have a large design fee associated with it. And so in my memo, I proposed to you or discussed two, the, the first two solicitation types, where you're actually advertising or sending it letters to multiple firms. And so Highway staff is looking at the design of the Highway 149 reconstruction and the Redwood Boulevard Bridge replacement. Two of those, or those two projects are significantly larger than, than the typical projects that we've been working on in the last few years of maybe $300,000 to $500,000 of construction cost, up to maybe a million dollars of construction cost. And so we are looking at the selection for design a lot closer with these projects because the design fees will in turn be larger than the design fees of the smaller projects that we typically work on. We had several meetings and, and work group sessions where we looked at the first two options and, and listed out pros and cons for those two options. And Highway staff does prefer and recommend the second option of sending informal letters to the selected firms requesting a proposal, and then evaluating those proposals based off of a number of different things. And that would be as opposed to advertising for the formal request for proposals, which is just a lengthier process, a much more formal, formal process. And in this case, we know the consulting firms that we are working with locally. We prefer to work locally with consulting firms rather than maybe get a consultant from out of state that we haven't worked with before through a request for proposal advertisement. So although this is only a briefing, we would appreciate any feedback that we would get on, on that information. And we would like to go forward with sending informal letters to send, to the selected consultants, and then coming forward in the next month or so with a contract that we have negotiated with, with one of the firms that, that was selected.
Comments? Commissioner Bender.
I have a question. So if you go the route that you're preferring and you select certain professionals, how do you, I mean, other than using a criteria that they be local, is there some other criteria that you'd be using? Would you, would you send it to any consulting firm locally that has...
We've developed a list, basically, for, and the, the two different projects we're handling differently because there are different, different technical aspects related to the design. But we've basically shortlisted a number of consultants for each one of those projects. And so we would send a request to each of those shortlists for the projects, and then evaluate them based on their proposal that they give to us, what their availability is, what their firsthand knowledge and experience for that type of work is, who they would be saying that is available to work on the project. Because although one firm might have the, the expert for a certain type of bridge design, he might not be available to work on this project because he's working on other projects. So those are just a few of the things that we would look at. We don't necessarily make a selection based off of their design fee because it is a professional service. However, if, if we received a couple of them, a couple of proposals, and, and one of them was three or four times as much as another one that's equally qualified, we would take that into consideration, their, their fees. And so we, we use their proposals to get a good idea of who we might like to work with. And then after that, we may move to interviews and, and have further discussions with the firms that have been shortlisted.
Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I don't have any objection to what you're planning. I defer to your, your expertise on which method you want to take, but I have no problem with it.
I have a concern about whether this is legal or ethical, because you're excluding people before they've had an opportunity, and I guess we don't know what's out there. And when you've got a project that's this big, when you're talking a million dollars, I don't want somebody coming back later and saying, "You didn't even give us an opportunity to bid on it." Kirsten?
Yep. I can ease your mind on the legal part at least.
Okay.
Five, 18822, there's a subsection in there that excludes engineering contracts from the requirement to send these out for formal request for proposal. That said, you can send those out for a formal request for proposal, but you're not legally obligated to. That's a special class of certain services under state law that a political subdivision like the county doesn't have to do. So as far as it being legal, it is.
It is legal. I just, I'm just, I'm concerned if it's ethical when you exclude other people from, from the bid on purpose. And I'm not, I'm comfortable with the people we've been working with. We've had great engineering services. That's not it. It's just when you've got a project this big, and you tell only certain people they can bid on it, I don't know how that looks, so... And this is a briefing, so I'm not voting on it today.
Well, three of our staff are professional engineers, including myself. This is highly debated, and, and we feel 100% comfortable that this is ethical. We certainly would not move down this road if, if we felt it was unethical. The engineering community, the civil engineering community is very tight-knit and close, and we know all of the local engineering firms very well. And we will select firms that we feel are qualified and we feel like we want to work with.
Okay. Commissioner Bender?
I just, so when you're putting together this list, are you thinking that you're going to contact three to five? I, I don't know how big a universe this is, and so I'm curious...
I think about a half dozen each for each project. A half dozen consulting firms. And, and including the very, very small consulting firms, there might be 10 to 15 civil engineering firms in Sioux Falls, or in this region, I would say, if you include the ones that might be within a half an hour of, or an hour of Sioux Falls.
Okay.
And, and several of those would have no interest in the contract to begin with. They work for developers, and, and they have different expertise.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Guess we'll move on to the next one. Item number 15, or 19, excuse me, is authorize the chairman to sign the memorandum of understanding between Minnehaw County Regional Juvenile Detention Centers and the Compass Center for collaboration efforts in service to victims of sexual abuse and sexual harassment as defined by the Prison Rape Elimination Act. Good morning, Jamie. I didn't see you out there.
Jamie Grabett, Director of the Juvenile Detention Center. One of the issues with being compliant with PRIA is making sure that we're providing advocacy services, as well as training to both our staff and the kids on different sexual issues that could be anywhere from lesbian, gay, bisexual issues, to just how to handle situations if they're reported to us. They've, so we've chosen to go with the Compass Center because they've been providing these services already to other agencies throughout the county. They've provided two trainings to our staff already, and they've reported out to our facility about five times to work with kids that were reporting issues of abuse or, or sexual abuse. So we feel that they meet the needs for us in, to be in compliance with PRIA, and, and we're asking for you to give the chairman permission to sign this agreement.
Any questions for Jamie?
Just a couple of comments on the, on Compass Center, and Ken may, have to correct me if I'm wrong, but Compass Center is a nonprofit organization. The county does support them. I don't remember exactly how much we give them, but they are nonprofit, and they have been required by the state, I believe, to provide services for this without any state funding, which just seems a little crazy, but they have to.
If I, if I recall, I'm not sure that they had their funding completely cut by the state.
That's what I remember.
I just can't remember, but they did have some, a significant reduction in funding from the state. You know, as such, I know the county has boosted not only its general fund donation to the Compass Center for the works they did. I believe the figure is close to $35,000 per year. But the Compass Center also shares in a portion of the domestic abuse funds from, from that particular fund, you know, for the work that they do. And again, that was specifically done by this commission in response to the reduction of funds from the state.
Yeah. Yeah. So, and I think they do very good work.
And we will have an option, or an opportunity to look at this funding.
We have an opportunity to look at this funding with our very limited amount of income. Exactly. Exactly. We do.
But the distribution, the distribution of the abuse monies also.
Yeah.
Just for your understanding on this MOU, there are no costs associated, no budget impact at all.
Right. They're doing it for free.
I'll move to authorize the chairman to, or chair to sign the MOU.
I'll second it. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jamie. Item number 20 is authorize the chairman to sign the fiscal year 2016 contract for clinically managed residential detoxification services in the amount of $134,703 between Minnehaw County and the South Dakota Department of Social Services Division for Behavioral Health. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, we've had a contract with the state of South Dakota for many years to access funds for our clinically managed residential detoxification program. This year, we've been notified by the state of South Dakota that they've set aside the $134,703 to help with that service for 2016. And that runs from June 1 of 2015 through May 31 of 2016 to coincide with the state's fiscal year. This is a slight increase from what they allocated last year, but I will also remind you that we had, we had approved an addendum that had reduced this contract amount to just over $66,000 to reflect more actual usage of the program during this past fiscal year. So we are asking that you authorize the chairman to sign this agreement. It is highly likely that we'll see another addendum as it gets closer to the end of the year that'll adjust this contract amount based on actual usage. But again, that's just one of the legs of the stool that we use to fund detox. The other one comes from the city of Sioux Falls of about $157,000, so...
Okay. Any questions for Ken? Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. And item number 21 is to authorize the chairman to sign the Joint Powers Agreement Addendum for Secure and Non-Secure Detention Services between Minnehaw County and the counties of Bonhomme, Brookings, Charles Mix, Clay, Hanson, Hutchison, Lake, Lincoln, McCook, Minor, Moody, Turnier, Yankton, and Union. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, back in July 1 of 1995, we had signed a joint powers agreement with these particular counties, with the exception of Union, and that to, to provide for both secure and non-secure juvenile detention services as part of a regional partnership effort. That agreement, or that original agreement expires on June 30th of this year. And so the partner counties have gotten together, and what they're proposing is that we enter into this addendum to extend all the rights and privileges of the access to our facilities for... for another two-year period as we continue the planning process in order to define what the future building project would be for the Juvenile Detention Center, particularly as it relates to our efforts and the realities of how we're housing kids now with our JDAI initiative. What this addendum does is to establish the framework for a new cost-sharing agreement. Presently, the old one is based upon the actual number of juveniles within the jurisdiction in that, and that everyone determined that that was not really reflective of how things were going today. So the new addendum says is that the cost-sharing arrangement for any new facility is going to be based on a five-year history of actual bed usage, and that will fluctuate from year to year as new data becomes available as, as counties use it. It also provides that the counties have agreed that they'll continue to work together under utilizing this formula to plan for any new facility projects. They will, it also acknowledges that the original debt service as contemplated by the original agreement is now done. That has been fully satisfied by the partner counties, and no such debt service payments are due during these next two years of this particular agreement. They will continue to get access to our facilities, both secure and non-secure, and I will tell you that the partnership rate is at $165 per day for secure detention. If you are a, a non-partner with us, that secure rate is $250 a day. And then, of course, the non-secure detention rate is at 120. I want to remind you that this particular addendum does not bind Minnehaha County or any of the partner counties to a particular building project, and that, and that a new joint powers addendum or agreement will be, will be formulated once a building project has been identified during the next two-year period. So this addendum is in effect from, excuse me, July 1 of 2015 through the end of June of 2017. All the partner counties have a copy of this agreement. They are all waiting for notification from Minnehaha County that you have in fact approved the agreement. Once that is done, they will be scheduling this agreement for their own commissioners' consideration yet this month, and then we will make arrangements to obtain original signatures so that all of the counties, all 15 of them, will have an original copy with everybody's signature on it. So, and hopefully we'll get that done before the end of this month.
Any questions for Ken? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ken. Item number 22 is Minnehaha County Commission Liaison Reports. Are there any? Commissioner Kelly.
If you watched Kelo last night, you saw him and think about the Development Foundation buying a significant amount of land north of I-90 in Marion, I think is, yeah, out by the, out by the McCrossan. I had not said anything previously because this has been kept, they've been asked to keep very confidential because you can imagine they're dealing with several pieces of land. They've already bought three of them now. But today at 3:30, I believe it is, at the Holiday and Sitter Center, there will be a press conference. I'd encourage anybody to go because this is a big deal. And it's going to chew up a, you know, it's going to add the city into quite a bit of property on the north end there, but it also now is debuting the development north of I-90 with your sewer water and all the other things the city will have to bring in there. So to read, I haven't brought it before, it's obviously the tightness of negotiation.
So they will be annexing the property? I mean, I was aware of it...
That's my understanding, is that because they want sewer and water, they will need to, and probably fire and police protection also.
Good question. I just was, I had thought of that yesterday and thought, was this going to be building permits for Minnehaha County or building permits for the city of Sioux Falls? But if they're annexing, it's all going to be theirs.
Well, hopefully, unless they do the disastrous TIF, the, the money, you know, the property tax will flow to the county. Yeah, the building permits will probably flow to the city, unfortunately.
Yeah. Okay. And meeting today at 3:30 at the Holiday.
3:30.
And I think it was an RSVP invitation.
Okay, did the question, I'll get one.
Yeah. Yep, they did. Yep. Okay. Any other liaison reports? Any new business? Any old business? Any executive session?
No.
So I look at...
No exec.
A motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned at 10:35.